Hi, Marcie.
Hi.
Hi, it was nice to meet you.
Appreciate that.
Make sure everybody saw their chairs.
This should be reaching out and taking place. City manager. Let's go. We're going to go ahead and call the city council rail subcommittee meeting of January 5th, 31st, 2019 to order. So we'll call. We're both here. And move on to the regular business item. I want to thank you guys all for coming to. This is quite a turnout. So this is really, really kind of you. Our first regular business item tonight is discussion of status and next steps for the Ravenswood Avenue Rail Crossing Project.
All right. I'm Angela Obeso. I'm the senior transportation engineer here at the city. And I'm also the project manager for the Ravenswood study, Ravenswood Avenue Railroad Crossing Study. And as many of you probably know, we are coming towards the end of this phase of our study. And we went to council on January 15th with informational, I'm sorry, a study session. And so one of the comments that we got as part of that effort was to come to the rail subcommittee. And so we decided that was a really good idea. So we're here tonight to present an update and also to get some directions about next steps before we go to city council to get an action and a motion on. So just a, I'm going to try to be brief with my presentation. If any of you folks have seen a previous presentation, a lot of these slides may look something other. This is just an overview geographically of the area we're talking about. So that's the rail corridor. The yellow lines are the city limits. We have Palo Alto to the right and Atherton to the left. And the red circles are the four existing Caltrain crossings. So just a quick little project at a glance here. This is culmination of various slides that I've shown numerous times before, but I really wanted to focus on the fact that the reason that the current scope got started was a safety focus. We've had concerns about public safety for all modes of traffic, specifically with Ravenswood. And so this project got scoped with that in mind. We've had over 50 community and stakeholder meetings to date, and we're continuing to have meetings. We just had some meetings yesterday with different stakeholders. And then this meeting here tonight. And so just a kind of a quick highlight of how much we want to get the community feedback to help perform the decisions that we're asking council to make. Throughout the process with the agreement that safety was the main concern, we also heard these reoccurring themes. But what I wanted to focus on with this slide was what we're calling wish list items. What that means is that those are out of the scope of the current study. The quiet zone and grade separating at Encinal are things that we can look into and pursue after we have a preferred alternative. And we start moving forward with an idea of what we're doing, then we can look at what makes sense to do with these other items. The other two are things that really are made focus of why we're here tonight and some of the decisions we're asking of council related to the comments we keep hearing about interest about a trench or tunnel or a viaduct or fully elevated rail. So I'll get into that a little bit more. But just to go back to the scope of the current study, this is what we were scoped to study. What we're calling alternative A is the underpass. The rail tracks stay where they are. And Ravenswood would go underneath. And the other three crossings would stay as existing. Nothing would change. With alternative C, that's our hybrid. The rail tracks would come up and three of the streets would go down to create kind of a split between the two to create three grade separations. So just to give some context to the current scope, this is what we were scoped to do. This is what our current grant covers. And so this is the focus of part of what we're here tonight to ask. So May of last year, we brought forth to the council an evaluation of A and C and asked the council to make some recommendations or actually to make a motion on a preferred alternative to close out this phase of the grant and the study. And they approved a motion to move forward with alternative A. And they also directed us to do some additional scope of work, specifically looking at a tunnel, the financial feasibility, and also noise and fully elevated. So in December, we came back, we had been working on those items and we came back with updates on various things. But specifically, what's important for tonight's discussion is that we issued draft of the project study report, which is the final documentation of the study, the current scope, and a draft scope of work for those additional studies. So really updating about what we were asked to do in May. So we released those to the public and asked for comments so that we could return to council. We returned to council on January 15th, so just a couple of weeks ago. And by four o'clock on that day, we received a total of 75 comments from 64 unique commenters. And since then, just as a quick update, we've received about 10 additional comments. I think they were from nine unique commenters. If you want to get copies of those, I can certainly provide those to you. Most of those comments came through the city council email, so they're already available for the public. So those comments generally fell into three categories. Comments on the project study report, which really focused on the question of A or C as the preferred alternative. There's also comments on the draft scope of work and then just some general comments. So we'll talk about the draft project study report first. We received four types of comments. Thirty-two were opposed to alternative A. And the main reasons given for that were that people were concerned about losing connectivity between Alma and Ravenswood with that option. They're also concerned that losing that connectivity would add traffic to Laurel, where there's a lot of bikes and pedestrians and other types of activity. The folks who were in support of alternative C generally commented that they were in support because it kept that connectivity. And they preferred multiple grade separations over just one location. And just of note, it's not shown on the screen, but in the general comments category, we got about 11 people saying that they prefer multiple. They didn't specify A, C, hybrid, tunnel, viaduct. They didn't specify what type, but they generally said they prefer. There was 11 folks who said they prefer more than one grade separation. So that's not captured in these counts here, but it's of note for this. So we came to city council on the 15th, like I said, as a study session. And the general direction we got that evening was there was a preference for revising the project study report to show alternative C, the hybrid with the three grade separations. And that would require a few minor revisions to the project study report. Like I mentioned, the project study report is really just documenting the whole process. So the end result is the preferred alternative, but most of the other documentation in there is talking about the evaluation of A and C. It covers both, the comparison matrix. And there's just a few locations where it says, this is the final preferred alternative for this phase. So what we will do then, we can return to city council, tentatively, depending on how tonight's direction and discussion goes. We can return on February 12th and ask for action from city council on the project study report and the preferred alternative selection. So tonight, what we're recusing from the rail subcommittee is a formal recommendation that staff can bring back to city council on the next steps. What preferred alternative should we show in the PSR? And what version of it should we bring to approve? So with that, I just wanted to pause and see if you wanted to ask any questions or have discussion about that.
So I do have an update for you. It won't be coming back on February 12th.
Okay.
It'll be coming, I mean, perhaps following that. But when we looked at the February 12th agenda, there was a number of items that evening that were going to be long.
Okay.
And be based on timing of those items. This was going to be the next meeting. But that's good because it could potentially give rest to one of these meetings if necessary. So I can share that with.
Okay. Well, that's very useful.
Before we could, I guess we would ask questions now and then we take public comment.
And there's.
Take public comment first? All right. So I don't think we have cards here.
I don't think we have enough cards.
So what we can do is, we can just have people raise their hands and then we'll go around the room. We'll put it for, it's all right with everyone. We'll do it for two minutes at a time. Someone has a comment. Try to capture those. And then go ahead and move through. So anyone want to speak?
Just one quick question though for Angela. You say requesting a formal recommendation. Is it between A and C?
Yes. Yeah, so the goal here is to close out the project study report so that we can close out the grant and move forward with starting to apply for funding for environmental design. That doesn't mean that we can't go back after we do additional studies and revise or do an addendum to the project study report. This really is so that we can, we can close out the grant with the TA and move forward and open up some stop time for other efforts.
I'm going to put a pin in that.
Okay.
All right. So Mr. Schmidt.
Hi, I'm Steve Schmidt. I live in the Willows. And I've been following grade separations and things like this for a while. I'm in favor of more rather than less, which, given the physical surroundings and the political surroundings of Menlo Park, the only thing that really works is a viaduct. And so to the question tonight, I would, I would encourage the subcommittee to support alternative C because that's closer to a viaduct than anything else that's on the table. And I remember in May, the council agreed to study other alternatives, trench, tunnel, viaduct. And I don't know what the status of those things are, but given the amount of discussion or competition between basically doing nothing and having a viaduct, I think it's important to have a design for the viaduct. So everybody's kind of on the same page about in regards to what is possible, what is real, and what is not real. So I would, I would encourage the subcommittee to keep that viaduct option open and in fact, expand upon it to the extent that there is a design. And my preference would be to start raising the tracks on the Atherton line, but politically that might be dicey for some. But, so eventually, we may end up closing Encinal. But again, more separations are better than fewer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'm just going to work my way around them. Yes?
My name is Kristen Geiser, and I've lived on Laurel Street between here and Willow Road for seventeen and a half years. And I actually got, I was paying attention to this, reading the updates and logging on on my own to stay up to date. But it wasn't until December when it was brought to my attention that option A included closing access to Alma. So even in my own sort of civic keeping up as I could, that detail had been missed on me. And so one request I'd like is that if A remains in conversation, that we not refer to it as the Ravenswood, like the one road option, but that it's Ravenswood and closing Alma. I think it needs to be super public. I have not talked to one person since December who understood that it included closing Alma. And usually the response that I get is, wait, 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 we tried that and that was a disaster. So we tried that during the summer when schools were not even in session. The traffic backed up both directions on El Camino and throughout all of the downtown Menlo Park streets at 10:00 in the morning and 11:00 in the morning. And so it wasn't rush hour and we didn't have school. And it was almost unbearable. People were starting to joke about going to Safeway at midnight or 10:00. So I think it's just really important that we not overlook that as a piece of it, but it's a major piece. So it impacted traffic throughout our whole community. And the other thing it did is it didn't just increase traffic on Laurel, but it increased traffic on Waverly, Lynnfield, and Sherwood. So as cars came down Laurel, they would cut up Waverly or Sherwood or Lynnfield, going very fast. On more than one occasion, flipping off women and caregivers and fathers pushing strollers. It was just really troubling. And I called the police department a few times in the first few days and said, I think it'd be great to come watch and tick it right away so as people are developing new habits, they understand that there are stop signs and that they are important to stop at them. And I think they may have come, but it just, I don't think there was data collected on number, speed, impact, et cetera. So I think my request is that we keep it super public and just pay attention to the full impact of that.
So I've spoken and just talked before the. My name's Burl Abbey. I live in Lynnfield Oaks neighborhood down in Laurel. I agree with all of the comments about the impact of cutting off home. That was the third time it's been tried since I've lived in Lynnfield Oaks neighborhood since 1999. The same result all three times. So hopefully we don't try the test the fourth time. But basically, I agree that in terms of what we should do going forward, that multiple grade separations are really what are needed to town. So in this case, alternative C would be best. And that really, but Angela made a good point. Originally, I recall, this reincarnation started with the unfortunate death on the intersection with the safety issue. And so I think multiple grade separations gives the best safety in terms of kids being separated from the grade separations on, you know, in the bike ways and so forth, crossing town. So I think that shouldn't be, and I know it has been forgotten by the staff. Talked about cutting off home. And then just the final thing, that if we do, when you get to the stage of requiring the whole fact that the traffic impact for whichever choices may be expanded more than just a couple of blocks from where the grade separations are, specifically, you know, I think anybody who's lived in town knows, but the alternate routes will probably be based on what happens. And so those streets should be studied depending upon what's then, I guess. So if, you know, alternative A is selected, I would request it to be studied, the impact on Laurel all the way from Encinal to Laurel, you know, right? And maybe some of the cross streets could. But again, I think that could be something that would be pretty obvious, let's research the impact of it and what's chosen. So that's, that's enough. I mean, you've read my comments before, so they're all about the same.
Thank you. Yes?
I just wanted to pitch in to alternative C. Phil Brown, Berkeley Avenue, 30-year resident of the city. I've watched other cities do the hundred grade crossings, wished we had, should have done it in the 90s. I'd like it to be done before I dead. I'm 65 now. I'm not holding out much hope. I've got 20 years left, I think. I'm surprised if we get it done, but it'd be nice. Definitely all three under crossings, so the plan C. I've expressed it before to this committee like a year ago at the city council back in May or whenever they, I missed the last meeting where they voted on A. I see now it's going to be up again. They're going to be considering C again. That's, they're going to go. It just makes so much more sense.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I wanted to mention to you last. Here, cool up. One more, yes.
I live at 503 Oak Grove Avenue. So very interested in option C. I think like a lot of other people, that's something I've never thought about for, I guess we've never thought about for a long time. We've been in the front of the year.
Thank you. Start in this corner and we'll come down later. Yes?
Hi, I'm Steve Van Pelt. I live in suburban park. I've been in the town since 83. I used to be a Caltrain commuter. I'm retired now. One of the comments that Harry Riggs made reminded me that we started discussions and a lot of things just got dropped. He was talking about that things could end up being shut down for three to five years on alternative C. There was also a discussion started when they did the grade seps in San Carlos. They ran, so El Camino's that way. They ran the shoe fly track out of that lane. They constructed the berm up here so cars could still go, old hike vehicles could still go under the new constructed berm and go over these tracks until they were removed. Now, we're going to have our shoe fly track closer and the bridge we're going to construct is lower. And we started a discussion and we thought the clearance, when both of those are there, there will be a period of time when that's true, right? Before we dug out this and removed the shoe fly, we thought the clearance was going to be about six feet. But there was no definitive conclusion of that and no conclusion about how long that was going to take. To me, that's a fatal flaw in alternative C. I had asked that alternative A be studied in another way because I realized that one grade separation isn't going to do it. I like the thought of doing the underpass because I think that's the best way to do it. It does have incredible side effects that we're going to have to manage. But I along thought that we should be studying Ravenswood as one project and then a follow-on project when that's done. I don't think you want to do two of these at a time or three of these at a time. And my big reason for liking alternative A is Angela said something that isn't true anymore. She talked about alternative A not moving the tracks. Well, unfortunately, our design that we've chosen for the station, which is needed for alternative C, is also now part of alternative A and requires moving the tracks. When we do that, we have to have a shoe fly track. If instead, we do not move the tracks, we can do it without a shoe fly track. And to me, that is a big thing.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Hall, 25-year resident of Menlo Park. First time talking to this.
Speak up, please.
Daniel Hall, Menlo Park, 25-year resident. First time talking to this committee. I believe grade separations are good. I'm all for it. I'm all for safety. I'm all for calming. I'm all for a safe route for the kids go to school. Whatever design we choose, I'm looking at, as long as we're not trying to push more traffic through our streets.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Bryman, Lynnfield Oaks. It seems to me that the math that was initially presented, which was 32 votes based on the survey, were for multiple grade separations. And you had 21 against A. And then you mentioned an additional 11 that wanted multiple even though they didn't like A or C. Every comment so far has suggested that there needs to be multiple. And whether you do one first or you do two later, at the risk of, I'm not an engineer, but at the risk of having undulating tracks, it seems like we've got to go big here. And we have to do, we have to do the whole thing or it doesn't much make sense. How we do it is different, right? But in doing it properly, of course. But it seems to me that, you know, that we get it and there has, there has to be all of them.
And three points I wanted to make. One is Adina Levin sent in an email. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but she knows more about rail than I think anyone in the state. And she had a lot of good information about the cost of a trench, so, and a tunnel. So I just hope that you look at that carefully. I also think we can learn a lot from our neighbors, particularly Palo Alto, who's going through a similar process. And I sent to CCI some videos that the Palo Alto consultant had put together that I think were really enlightening about the pumps and the grades. And they also have great 3D renderings of what everything looks like. So I encourage everyone to look at those videos. And the third, I was in San Carlos today and it just wasn't that bad. Like I just think we are thinking that we're like about to go to like the worst place ever. And if we end up with a berm or whatever, we're going to be okay, as long as it's safe. So I just hope that everyone like puts a perspective that we're not talking about like separating the East Berlin and West Berlin or something. So that's all I'm saying.
I just want to urge here that in the next step, the viaduct concept, which again is fully elevated only over downtown and then it maps down to the neighborhoods to the south and the north, get, it's a full and fair analysis on option that is perhaps not ideal to Caltrain but is viable to Caltrain and sensitive to the neighborhoods. The short version of what I and others have studied over the last nearly year is that the viaduct as an option has more pluses, including some big ones, and fewer downsides, including some big ones, than any other option. And it really needs a good and fair study. It obviously meets the separation role at three crossings. It doesn't disturb existing properties, sidewalks, and underground utilities. It eliminates train horns the way the other separations do, but it avoids the hollow dip for bikes, even if the C meets the match, which bikes really don't like, I can tell I can see that no option is going to please all people, but there is an option that meets the Caltrain grades, that does not disturb the status quo of Lynnfield Oaks, and is crossing Encinal at perhaps three feet above grade, which by the way, is what O'Brooke Crossing is, that bumps up about three feet. And finally, I think it gives us something actually to be excited about, which is the new connectivity downtown. You can see through, you can light through, you can walk through, not just on the streets, but pretty much anywhere.
So I'm Lynn Bramlett, and I live near the Glenwood Crossing. My husband couldn't come tonight, but my neighbor would like to speak too. Long story short, when you had all these studies before, I attended some and my husband attended most, if not all. And I know a careful process went into it. And his, you know, assessment was the people there definitely wanted C. And so we were happy when council rescinded the other motion or whatever the term is to go to C because we need all three done at once. Now, as I understand it, you need a decision, your recommendation on A or C. And so I'm reading my comments there because I think then you could look into these other options later, which I don't object to at all. But, you know, I like C. And then if my neighbor could speak too.
My name is Edsy Albeti. I live on Glenwood Avenue between Mills Street and Laurel. And so I'm very close to the train track. My objective option A is that it will not be satisfied for very long and people get frustrated and then wish to separate Glenwood as well as Laurel, as well as O'Brooke. And the impacts are severe and the type of, of grade separation. And the impacts are severe, and the type of, of grade separation would have to be done in the same way at, at Glenwood and Oak Grove as they were in option A at Ravenswood, if that was a selected option. And that would eliminate many homes and be very disruptive to many of the neighbors. And so that's why I see option C as the better option. I don't think the elevated track is a good option because of noise propagation. I haven't heard anything about that from anyone. How will the noise propagate? And that I believe there's more noise propagation related to that. And so that's my concern there. If we could have a tunnel, that would be best, but I don't know if that's only in Brooklyn, but that would be the best option if our neighbors to the north and south would agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You waited very long.
No, I'm Paul Jones, I, I live on a cul-de-sac off of Glenwood, which is in Atherton. I'm chair of the Atherton Rail Committee, and I came to tell you that Atherton's current position on your grade separation, on, on grade separations is that we want our track to be at grade throughout the town. So my concern over an elevated berm is whether or not you can get the trains back down to grade by the end of Felton Gables before you go into the park and Atherton property. As so long as the, the berm is limited, we have no problem with what you do, but we are concerned about that because we do want to stay at grade.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Jones. Yes.
So I'm Marissa Abramowitz, and I didn't raise my hand before because I hadn't had a chance really to hear other people speak, so I just wanted to, I guess, follow up on other things folks had mentioned. Um, first of all, you mentioned the comments that came in in December, and, um, the, I can't be three minutes yet.
That wasn't me.
The, um, you know, the homework assignment for December, you know, to send in your comments by the beginning of January, January was really, what additional things should we be looking into, right? And so that was really what was the request that was made to the community. And so in a way, when I hear, it's wonderful, I think that people are participating in the, you know, in the civic process here, but I think it's sort of hard to draw conclusions from that because that wasn't really the question that was asked. So it seemed to me the folks that sent in comments saying, please study this, or that, or the other thing, that's the key stuff. The other stuff is sort of nice information, but I don't think we can really say, well, this number said this, and it was more than that. I just don't think it, it makes sense. And then the other thing, you know, the question here is between A and C, but yet there's been so much talk about this viaduct and this fully elevated thing that I feel like, okay, I'll go off the homework assignment. Um, and just say that, you know, I really feel that it is, before spending money, to go and examine a viaduct or a fully elevated structure, before even going down that road, we need to share with the community examples of structures like this going in, and understand what impacts it had in other places. And that shouldn't be that hard to do, okay? We don't need to go and like invent the wheel on this and be the first to do this. So, but I would just say before, saying, let's go study, oh, fully elevated, let's first just make sure that we all are on the same page and, and understand what it could be like.
Sir.
Um, my name is Bill Flohne, and I live in Lyndia Oaks, and I represent a small group that we've initiated called Design First. And by design then, we don't mean just aesthetic design, we mean a thorough design, a philosophy of development. And I would like to second what both Steve and Henry said about looking seriously at the viaduct option. When I first heard of it, I felt negatively about it, based on a former city where I lived that had the equivalent of a viaduct, and it was very problematic. But as I have studied it more and more, I think it deserves a level of study that it hasn't received. I think it was dismissed very early on, it was a little four, and I think a very serious study should be made of that. And I think if that study is made, and if a part of that study does provide design renderings carefully put together, I think that very, it can be highly competitive for a number of factors with C, which be my otherwise hope, but I think that the viaduct solution. And as far as the noise issue goes, engineering-wise, it can be done, if they design carefully, it can be done. And I should care because I live directly across from the track on Alma Street. And so I care about noise, not only noise, but I'm convinced from an engineering standpoint that noise can be dealt with. I can, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Hi, so, um, like a couple of other, hold on, Wendy should learn.
I'm sorry, I'm an engineer.
I think that, I'm definitely not an engineer, so I'd like to better understand the particulars of going underground, um, more than just the cost of it, the pros and cons of it. Also really interested in economies of scale, how we can work with our neighbors to spread out the cost or to get more, um, state-funded options. I also wanna know if we, if we defer, if we just start with Ravenswood and defer the others, are we looking at getting stuck when high-speed rail comes through? I'm a little worried that we will lose our opportunity if we don't make a bold move.
Thank you.
Eyes in the back of your head, man.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I had a blind spot.
I'm Sean McGuire, I live on Laurel Street, just down the way here, and I feel like a babe in the wood coming into this discussion really late, I've been watching some of it going on. But I, I really have questions more than, than opinions on this. My question is, and this relates to what the gentleman over here from Atherton was saying, is how are these different communities that are hundreds of yards apart going to coordinate on the approach in a way that is engineeringly feasible and shares technologies and whatever else? I, I haven't seen anything about any coordination. I've watched the Palo Alto films, and they seem to have spent a lot of time looking at some of the issues that relate to their several grade crossings. And I, I just am very curious as to how this is gonna be handled between the different communities. And I, I second some of the opinions that have been recently given about looking at a viaduct. I mean, ideally, a tunnel would be the thing, but I understand that there's a lot of issues about how the stations would be configured, and where the land would come from, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I do though think that we're in one of the most affluent communities in the world, and that we should be stretching a little in terms of, um, going for a long-term solution, not something that, that just obviates the immediate pain. And we are actually gonna be going through a lot of immediate pain with all these other developments that are going on here, so it's not as if this one would be something that that would blow us out of the water.
Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm part of the immediate development going on. So I, I'm Allison Rader, and I, um, work with Greenheart Development, and we are building on Oak Grove and El Camino and Garwood, um, the Station thirteen-hundred project. And I think our position is that we would, we would definitely be willing to explore the viaduct option, just because there is seemingly less construction impact, and we will have, um, a pretty critical part of our project right on Oak Grove and Garwood, and to have a shoe fly, um, running through there during construction is really, uh, a mess for a new development. So, um, we, we very much want that retail area to be active, vibrant, you know, connected. And I think with a cutoff to the rail and the streets at grade is, is really detrimental to our, our operation. So I think, uh, we, we would, I mean, I think, I understand people's perspective on the, the viaduct, you know, being so tall, but it would be, um, you know, less construction time, and I think worth exploring cost.
Can we wrap up more, more public comment? Okay, we'll go here, and then here in the back. After this round, if you haven't raised your hand, if you haven't raised your hand the next time I call, don't raise it.
Brande, Chamber of Commerce. We're definitely in favor of safety, and safety means multiple grade, multiple grade separations. What I haven't heard for a long, for a long time, and was brought up, I don't know how many years ago, by one of the consultants that, um, submitted a proposal, is top-down construction. And I'd like to understand more about top-down construction. It perhaps has not been done on this rail line, a Caltrain rail line, however, one of the proposals that was coming in from a consultant had experience with top-down construction. It would avoid, if not all, at least most, activity for shoe flies. It would, it would include construction in the evening, yes, but you could potentially stay at grade, or at least not a high berm, and, um, potentially avoid some of the problems that we all see and what we're looking at, whether it's A or C, or viaduct, or whatever. I, I'd like an answer on what is the status of top-down construction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
So my name is Tim Warner, um, I've lived in, on Arden Road, Menlo Park for thirty-plus years. So I've got sort of two quick comments. One is that I think there needs to be a balance between what grade separation will do positively and impacts on what is becoming really an intolerable situation on El Camino because of the traffic, and it's only going to get worse. And so if we do three grade separations as opposed to one, the increase in traffic congestion and other difficulties is going to be significant. And so for that reason alone, I would support A if given the choice between the two, which I think is the question. I guess the second point I would make is that we went through, we all sat through endless meetings over the past, I don't know, several years to come up with a direction, and the council voted for A. And so I guess the real question is, what's changed? Now, clearly, there was an election, so that makes a difference, obviously, but fundamentally, in terms of the, the actual, you know, grade separations themselves and their, and their impacts, what has changed to, to result in an option C? And as far as the viaduct goes, I'll just make a third point quickly. There has been no convincing effort on the part of the people that support the viaduct that actually shows how it can be attractive. That word is used frequently by the viaduct promoters, but when asked to come up with actual evidence of that, it does not come through. And in fact, a former city councilman, it was Mr. Klein, said that at Saturday City Council meeting, that he went through the internet looking for an attractive viaduct and was unable to find one. So that's sort of on the bracket, so that's my thought.
Okay, there are some hands that went up today. Anyone else have come? Yes.
Hi, my name is Leah Candell, I'm the general manager at the Residence Inn here in Menlo Park. For those of you who don't know us, we're right on the corner of, we're the neighbor of the Glenwood Crossing, and we're also the neighbor of thirteen-hundred, which is why I chose to speak today. At the end of the day, I haven't spoken before, but as Angela knows, I come to almost every meeting, because I feel the decisions are really up to the residents. You're the ones who live here twenty, thirty, forty years. But, um, but I do worry about the construction. Whatever you decide in days about the construction, we mentioned the shoe fly, that train will, track will be ten feet, less than ten feet from our rooms. That's how close it will be. That street of Garwood is the only way that the, the fire department can come if there's any issues at the hotel and we have a fire need, that's the only way they can get through. And we like being a part of this community. We like being able to add value to your businesses, to your restaurants, to the retail, and I think the taxes that we provide don't hurt our city either. And so while a lot of people are like, you're just a business, we, we feel like we're a part of your community now as well. And we help people who are relocating, we help people who are moving to this area, and we provide homes for them and the businesses that are close by. And so my thoughts really just about how do we do this? You know, if we do all three at the same time, does that mean there's gonna be bad traffic for all three crossings for the next, for whatever five years it's gonna take? Because even without that, I see the traffic impacts that I have just right outside on Glenwood. So just something to think about when we go through this, and at the end of the day, like I said, it's, it's up to the residents, but I hope that the businesses here that provide for you guys will also be able to be helpful in kind of our comments as well.
Yes.
Hi, I just wanna second some of the points that have been made. My name is Carrie, I've been in Menlo Park for ten years, and I've grown up in the Bay Area. And I wanna understand what happened to choice A also. I mean, we went through a whole process with the community, and now I'm reading in the almanac that it's been overturned, so I would like to understand what on earth is going on with that. Number two, um, you know, also, I'm gonna second the notion for reviewing more about going underground. I think it's a permanent solution, it's a long-term solution. Aesthetically, it's the best solution. And I'm gonna also second the fellow who said that the viaducts are ugly. I mean, they are ugly, and it makes it look like a big industrialized kind of mess. And is that what we want for Menlo Park, Atherton, and Palo Alto? I mean, it's gonna permanently change the character of the city, which is gonna be even more impactful with the high-speed rail. So, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we wrap up public comment? All right, I'm not trying to, not trying, I really appreciate everyone coming in for public comment, and to be very frank, it's kind of, when we get to our comments, you'll see how it's sort of crystallized a little bit for me, how I'm thinking of them.
Oh, quick, can I, can I preface before you give your questions and comments? So I do have another part of the presentation that goes into some recommendations that we staff have met with some of the stakeholders since the January fifteenth meeting, and we've heard some of these same differing opinions in more detail. And so we have some recommendations about the study part of this question tonight, so there's two pieces really, the, the project study report, which is the A or C question, and then the scope, what study should the scope include, what revision should be made? So that's kind of part two. So a lot of the questions and comments I, I've noted down, but just, just so you know, there's more to come.
Okay. Do you wanna quote the next part, or you wanna go and chuckle it out?
We can go to the next part.
We go to the next part, and then...
Okay. All right. So on the proposed scope of work, initially, the version that was, was distributed to the public, the draft scope of work had three main components, and those covered the three main components that we were asked by the council back in May of last year. A tunnel feasibility and funding analysis, a fully elevated alternative analysis, and a noise study. So that's what we issued, that's what we started to receive comments about. Uh, just kind of backtracking a little bit, we heard about the trench or tunnel and viaduct are fully raised as things that people were interested in, all the way back to summer, fall of two thousand seventeen. And so even though those were not part of our scope, our consultants were able to put together a very preliminary look at what a trench or a viaduct could look like, with the two main constraints of Caltrain's one percent maximum grade for rail and staying within the city limits. Doing a tunnel was not a feasible option within the city limits, so that's why we looked here at a trench over a tunnel. So just a quick reminder, and we can look back at this if there's questions. So then we received all those comments about the scope of work, and we went through them all, and we categorized and tried to figure out, okay, what, what's already included, what can we do some more work on, and, and what will be done in the future and other efforts? So three of the comments are things that we're already implementing. The first one, we're here tonight at the Rail Subcommittee, comparisons to viaduct, I think there was a comment about that tonight too, that the work that Palo Alto's doing. So the consultant team that we have hired, and has been on board the whole time, is now also on board for the Palo Alto study. So those, those videos and graphics and everything that, that are up on the website and the, the email you sent in to the City Council, the links there, those were done by the same consultant team that we're working with. So they're very familiar with both what Palo Alto's doing, what their constraints and opportunities are, and how they compared to ours. So a lot of that will be translatable to any additional studies that we do here. Uh, and then also, we'll complete the additional studies in the shortest amount of time that's feasible, based on the direction and priorities, we've got goal setting coming up soon, so, um, you know, with all the other priorities going on. So that's, that's definitely our goal, trying to get it done quickly so we can move forward to the next, um, phase. Uh, one item that we keep hearing about is to modify assumptions to use a... One item that we keep hearing about is to modify assumptions to use a rail grade greater than one percent. It has been approved by Caltrain at other locations. We just haven't been authorized to do any studies to see what grade would we need to achieve some of the things that we need to do. So we have some recommended revisions, a staff recommended revisions to the scope that are based on adding some flexibility there, but also speaking to the various concerns that we're hearing about elevation of rail at Enseny and Felton Gables, keeping things, you know, fully raised over downtown as Mr. Riggs referred to. You know, trying to balance all these different things and what could that study look like? So looking back, again, this is something we presented back in October of two thousand seventeen. This was the viaduct rail profile, keeping within the one percent in the city limits. So we, on a staff level, so this has not been technically looked at. We're just thinking that there's another option that we could look at. We could revise the scope so that it looks at raising Oak Grove and Ravenswood, the downtown core, where there are a lot of, a lot more traffic, a lot more bikes and pedestrians, connectivity to the downtown area, raising those as much as possible, potentially not having the, the streets stay at grade or maybe one or two feet. So any improvements would be minimal. And then trying to get back down, what would that grade need to be to get back down so that at Enseny we could be little or no impact there? Like I believe Mr. Riggs also mentioned, you know, potentially we'd have to raise Enseny a couple of feet, but we could keep it as an at-grade crossing. We wouldn't have to do some big trench or, or, or underpass there. So we have, you know, we don't know what that grade would need to be. So what we're saying, what we're recommending is that we include in the scope to look at this, do kind of an iterative process to see all the various constraints. If we bring Oak Grove and Ravenswood down one foot, two foot, keep it as existing. If we keep Enseny as existing, one or two feet up, you know, all these different flexible constraints that could be in play. What does that look like? And then come to council with some options and say, okay, here are the, here's the flexibility and here's what we can do. What should we focus on doing? And so this is a potential way to address some of these questions about the, the fully elevated rail and also about the grade, because we've never had it in the scope to study these things. This could be a, a chance to do it and also try to balance with the different concerns that we're hearing. So this is a, a scope change that we are recommending. We don't have a draft scope to review tonight, but we can. We can work with the consultant if, if we get direction from you tonight. Get a revised scope, get some ideas of what this would cost, work with the Rail Subcommittee before coming to council for any, any final approval. So then there were a bunch of other types of comments that we're not recommending as part of the current phase. So the reason, there's a couple of different reasons. The first six or seven are items that are typically included in the environmental study. With the PSR, we're just documenting what we've done so far. And then once you move into the environmental phase, it really, the environmental document will dictate what the final grade separation type is. What do we move forward into design with? So we would look at all these things before we move into a design phase. So we're not saying that we don't recommend we do these things. It just might not be as cost-effective to do it right now because the scope, once we close out the PSR, that's all the grant money we've got. So when we talk about doing additional studies, this is going to be city funds. Go ahead.
Do you have a handout with all of this?
I do.
Cause you're about to flip it and there's a lot of information.
Yes. And, and I'm going to put this up on the website. It'll probably be up on our city project website on Monday. So folks who want to see this, I know it's a lot of information and graphics on some of these, so it will be available shortly.
So all of these items without being included here?
So from, not all of the, uh, uh, what we're recommending is that all, all of these are not recommended at this point in time. Some of them, for example, eight and nine, evaluate other options at Enseny and study what the train station area layout and potential plaza. That's something that until we have a grade separation type in mind, we're looking at multiple things. We don't know what it could be. And so that's something that could be more meaningful once we have narrowed it down to, you know, what, what, uh, alternative A station area looks like could be drastically different to a fully elevated rail. So again, we're, we're recommending to not do that at this point in time until we narrow these down a little bit.
Okay.
Any other questions about this item? We can go back to this.
We'll, we'll come back to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Angel, is this thing recorded? Will it be available?
Yes, we are recording it and that will probably, the video will be posted on Monday as well. So the next steps on the scope of work is again, tonight we're here to ask for general direction before we come back to city council with, with the request for a motion. So what we hear from you tonight, we'll go back and work with the consultant and revise the scope, find out what kinds of P's we're talking about for all these different items. And we can return to you with a draft or we can return to council tentatively in March. Depending on this, the, the range of scope changes, it could be later than that, but that, that's what we're, we're aiming for right now. So tonight we're requesting general direction from you.
Council member comments, you want to start? We're not going to do another round of comments.
Oh.
So this is, I want to start just by saying that the way I'm thinking about this is the way I've been really struggling with this issue and talking to people. Because when you talk about it, everyone has in their own mind what this looks like. And the way that I started to think about it was when you look at, when our minds, like if you look at the pen in front of you, if you were to look at MRIs of your brain, for a long time, people thought when you recognize something, you just recognize for what it is. And then what they started to realize in today is you don't immediately recognize it for what it is. Your brain breaks it up into subfeatures and it pulls it all apart and then it puts it back together again. And the faster you do that is a measure, could be a measure of your IQ. All right. When we talk about this and my time talking to different people about this, these grade separations and what we're doing with the tracks, everyone is objecting to a different feature of the pen. And the problem is objectively what you hear in the arguments or subjective arguments about one piece or one feature. But we don't have any criteria to measure any of those features. And so I hear one person talking about how it affects them near their home or near the app or near Atherton. I hear another person talking about how it affects them near the downtown. I hear another person talking about all of these different things. And so, and then the problem is even if I, if I have, so then I start thinking, okay, well, I'm going to apply criteria to it. But the criteria changes on where you are. And so what would be really helpful at the outset, I think, to do is to break the rail, the corridor into pieces. So the piece over at each section of rail crossing in an area adjacent. Because and I remember in our discussion when I'm counsel, we do talk about that. We said, well, how's it going to affect this neighborhood? How will it affect the downtown? And then, and then when you get to the downtown, separate the station from the actual tracks. And then as it leaves the downtown, the grade separation and then how it goes on further past them. Bill dogs. For each one of those separate areas to then establish optimal criteria for each. So obviously when you're down near Hallidarts, you're going to want quiet. You're not, and I'm assuming another criteria would be, I mean, you can imagine all the different criteria lists. When you get to the downtown, you're going to have different criteria for what you want for the station as opposed to what you want for the tracks. Then the first thing you do, and then we went through this last night, the transportation master plan. After you establish that criteria with your colleague, the council, when people provide input for it, you put scoring for each piece of that criteria. And then for each area, you weigh the design with, whether it be, so for instance, when you do that and you get near the downtown, it may be that based upon this objective criteria we've established, a viaduct near the downtown will score very high because, but the station may not score very high. It may be that a berm is somewhere else will score high or a berm won't score high. But you go through each piece and you go through that analysis. Because at the end of the day, what we're trying to do, no one is going to be, not everyone can be happy with the outcome, but we're trying to optimize each piece of that rail line for everyone. And the reason why I think that's also important is when you look at this and you show the scope of work comments that we would add, I have no criteria to understand which ones are important for which piece, right? Like it's just, it's subjective right now. It's like, okay, well, maybe I think that one's important, but I won't know until the design's done. But if I had criteria that I knew was going to affect one piece based on scoring, I'd say, well, you know what, based on scoring, I need to figure out what the scores for this area here. And it's close enough, I need to figure that out now before I, before I choose. So I'd like to do that, I'd like to go ahead and actually try to with, and between now and then sit down with staff and try to figure out a recommended scoring, a recommended, some recommended criteria, some suggested scoring for different componentry that go ahead and come back to council with the report. And that doesn't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's indicative of what you're telling us with whether, what recommendation we make to council, whether it be A or C right now because we're not locked in. But as you move forward for a final design, I think it's going to be very helpful. And I also think it's going to give people in this room the ability to talk about different sections and what's important to them in a way that's definable. This is important in maybe the values I have for this area of track. And we can really drill down on that and figure out as community what that weight is. Now, just because, now in terms of philosophy, where I am, just to be fully transparent with everyone, I think the tracks need to be completely grid separated. I don't think you can leave any portion of these tracks at grade for safety reasons. And I, it's consistent with where I've been on that issue. A high-speed train going through, if it were to hit a car, would be something like, it would be unbelievable. That being said, so how we do that, there's all sorts of different design specifications that everyone has commented on here tonight. And I think that, that scoring criteria is going to help us figure that out, different component, what it looks like. Now then, there's a lot, there's been discussion, I know that there's a lot of people in town who are like, Ray, what the heck are you doing talking about a tunnel because of cost? Again, if you were to look at a tunnel, I think if you do criteria, it's real high and a lot, it ranks real high in a lot of criteria, but there's like a fatal criteria that we're going to have a problem with. But I'm not ready to, I'm not, I want people to understand that I'm not unrealistic. I'm just not ready to rule it out yet because I haven't talked to our friends in Atherton. I haven't talked to our friends in Palo Alto. And I just recently saw a council member in Palo Alto this weekend who was saying, we really want to talk to you about it. There may be no there there. And I'll be the first to tell you, I absolutely, there's all sorts of indications to say there will never be a there there. But until I've actually sat down with Atherton and Palo Alto, friends in Mountain View and said, and then gone to talk to somebody about whether it's feasible, I can't look them in the eye or Resonant in the eye and say, I've act, I've absolutely ruled it out yet. Now that being said, and for those of you who want us to have a tunnel, timeline's ticking on that. Because we're not, this isn't going to hold up the process in my mind. So I plan to like understand, have met with Palo Alto and Atherton and, and potentially Mountain View and understand, be able to look at the council in the eye and tell them whether or not I think it's feasible about in the next three months. So either there's something there or it's not. I think that's fair. But we haven't had that discussion with them. So, so that's where I am in it. You know, based on representation of staff, that we just need to wrap this up to, to lock up funding, but it doesn't lock us into a design. So the one thing I want to make clear that I understand is that if we recommend to the council, go ahead and move forward with option C, that doesn't preclude the state from paying us later on should dollars fall to come to us for a grade separation on any other design?
No, no, that, that, the money for design and the decision on design gets done as part of the environmental study. So really what the PSR is doing is informing what alternatives are we going to study? If you say alternative C, we can still go back and when we scope the environmental study portion, which we'll have to come back to council and get your approval on, we could look at A and C. We could look at C and a fully elevated as part of the environmental study. And then at the end of that, that's what then gets funded for design.
So very candidly, what's confusing to me about that is then why did they give us money for this to begin with? Like if it doesn't lock us into anything?
Typically, a, a project study report preferred alternative is what gets studied. Usually the build and the non-builds, there's two options. But that doesn't mean you can't study more than two in an environmental process. So it's just, that's typically how the process goes.
Okay. I've spoken enough. Council member comments?
Yeah, I'll briefly, I mean, for concluding out and giving the staff, you know, direction, it would be, you know, the, the PSR or maybe if we close out the PSR, it would certainly be a preference or the recommendation for alternative C. Again, accepting that that does very little other than allowing us to, to sort of close out this, this report and, and get, get reimbursed for, for the cost in, in that direction. Generally, as I said, when this matter came before council, I, I favor more separations than, than, than not. Mostly because I think along those lines with what Mayor Mueller was sharing, I think there, there is going to be a full sort of separation. You're not going to have a, a sort of a mobile intersection. And so the ones that we don't do, I, I'm assuming will, will, will be closed off as, as far as through, through, through traffic. And so if, if it is a situation where we're doing just one, I, I think we're looking at a, a future where we're essentially saying that three other crossings are openly likely going to be closed off. And if we say it's two, then two other, and if we say three, then, then it's one. And so what is that balance that looks for us as a city? But I don't think that, I, I don't think it's, it's realistic to think that there, there will be, you know, at-grade crossings in, in, in the future as we look at electrification and the increased frequency that's likely to come for that in some form of, of, you know, the possibility of, of, of high, high speed rail coming up in Inslaw. I mean, to kid, I, I know some people have, have expressed their, their preference for, for alternative A. And I certainly hear you. And the question is, you know, what changed? And, and the thing is, is that there was an election, an election as people say have consequences. And the people who are on city council who preferred alternative A are not there anymore. And then the people who were elected for, for alternative C who feel that they are responding to, to the voters and the general will of, of the people of, of this community for one, a realization that there will be complete separation. And two, that we should sort of go bid in looking for actually happening that separation at as many crossings as possible. And the, the very likelihood that those crossings where they're, they're not happening, that those crossings will be, will be closed off in, in the future. And, and to give the prior council their due, my understanding was that they were driven a lot by, by concerns about cost. And, and that's real, right? You know, money doesn't grow on trees, but I'm not willing to at this moment limit how we sort of proceed in this project based simply on, on analysis that, that we can't afford at our performance level possibly. And so I think that's how I'm, you know, I'm approaching this. You know, again, prefer an alternative C with this, 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 this understanding that it, you know, it gives us, we still have some options. I am, you know, totally, I do share the skepticism about, about viaducts. It's, it's a, and I've, I've met with some of you individually. And I'm always say, show me the picture's right of the, you know, quaint European village with the, you know, the Ural Star flowing through it and that, what those impacts are. And so, yeah, this isn't something where I'm going to be looking for Menlo Park to be like a first mover. It's something where I'm going to say, hey, where is this happening someplace else? And what have those impacts been? What have the noise impacts been? You know, what are, what are some of the other impacts? And, and so that's, that's why of course, I certainly, again, I think as far as, as you look at the construction process of viaduct or fully elevated will, will be the least, will have the least impact. But it could possibly be the ugliest. And that's longer than five years. And so I do want to like completely understand. And, and if it is the case that it can be great and, and we can emphasize design and it can be beautiful and it can look like some, you know, again, some Roman viaduct, then I'm, you know, I'm all for it. I'm just saying, show it to me and then, and then we can proceed under, under those rubrics.
Would you agree with coming up with a criteria? Would you agree with, uh, coming up with the criteria scoring system?
Oh, completely, yeah.
Okay, so we'd like to do that with you before council, like council. Cause I think I heard, for some people, beauty is going to rank high. For some, access to downtown, like it's just, everyone has different views.
Yes. If you, I, it wasn't clear upfront that there would only be one opportunity for public comments since there were two points on here. So I, um, I guess I regret that I didn't make the comment I wanted to make. So I, I guess I would just ask if there is, if you will open it up.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to open it up, uh, happy to open it up again. I didn't mean to be rude, but we, I wanted us to get through because we had all of this material to come and I want it still fresh in our brain. But please.
Okay. Well, thank you. And so, and thank you both for sharing your views. And I actually think it's really smart, a lot of smart things that you said. And I think this approach could make a lot of sense. But I am going to just say that I do think that it makes sense to look at option B as well. Option B was presented to council with these funds for the grant. Should we look at option A or should we look at option B or option C? And council said at the time, this is in April 2017, you know what? Let's try to actually not just do one study, let's try to get two. We'll look at A and we'll look at C because they're quite different and then we can, you know, interpolate to B. That's my recollection from that day. And I think actually B makes a lot of sense because at the end of the day, um, we have four crossings within six tenths of a mile. Okay, that's really dense. And two of those crossings are deeply residential. And if you look at Palo Alto, it's a half a mile between crossings. And if they close Churchill, it'll be even more. So we have a lot of crossings in a small space. And a chart that I had shared with council before last year, if you look at Ravenswood and Oak Grove, that's more than half. I mean, sorry, that's 75% of all of the vehicle crossings that are taking place. Okay, Glenwood is 13%, uh, Ensignal is 11. So if you ask yourself, what problem are we trying to solve here? I think the problem we're really trying to solve is Ravenswood and Ravenswood and Oak Grove. Because going around, you know, a tenth of a mile, it's a one-minute bike ride. I looked on Google Maps, four minutes to walk, one block. Okay, it's not that big a deal. So my thought would be we should really look at B and understand that as a feasible option. If down the road, high-speed rail comes, if down the road, we decide that it's really unsafe at, at Glenwood and, and Ensignal, we have the option that we can close those. And it's not that big a deal then for people to have to go around then. If, if Oak Grove is what's actually separated. I just feel like it's potentially a really smart option that addresses the big needs, doesn't impose these negative consequences on people in the most residential parts of the crossings and could end up just being the right thing. And I don't want to miss the opportunity to study it. So, so, oh, it's cost less, it would take less time, less disruption, shorter shoe fly. I mean, short-term benefits, long-term benefits and flexibility. So thank you for the opportunity to share that.
No, no problem. Does anyone have?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about high-speed rail. If high-speed rail does come on the tracks, the trains will go no faster than the Caltrain. In order to get the 10 trains an hour down that system, they all have to have the same maximum speed. So the high-speed rail trains will just like Caltrain, only they'll have a little bit of a giant.
I'll jump into this another time, one more time. The train has been, um, on the peninsula for something like a hundred and thirty-five years. So people in Felton Gables and in other parts of Menlo Park knew the train was there. Oh, sorry. Can we turn the audio off too? So I understand, uh, people at Wavenson neighborhoods are concerned about, um, the grade elevation of the tracks being raised, not only in their neighborhood, but near their neighborhood. But I just want to remind Mar, um, Marcy, is that your name?
Yes.
That 75% of the traffic may be on Oak Grove and, and Ravenswood. But what you're doing is moving what's left to, to those two streets potentially. So there's one bit of a problem. The other, the other issue that hasn't been talked about is the horn noise. If we grade separate three or four, um, crossings, the horn noise goes away. Goes away for Felton Gables and Mills Court. So, you know, the idea of studying option B or studying, studying a viaduct or studying a tunnel, they can't really be done, uh, anecdotally. I think we really need to see these things and how they affect the flow of traffic, how they affect the noise. And what nobody has mentioned here is how do these at-grade crossings impact Caltrain operations? Somebody gets hit at, at Glenwood, it shuts down the whole system. So it's not just little segments in Menlo Park, but it's the whole transportation system. Um, and so not just shutting down a system, but injuring or killing people too.
So I'm going to jump in before we, uh, let's just say that tonight, I think we have a choice of just moving, uh, A or, I mean, just moving this forward. But in terms of B, definitely when we're going through the criteria selection and we're looking at, I would be Glenwood and there, an issue came up that could be indicated, it sounds like council can say, okay, well, there's an issue here that rises to a level ranking enough that it's not being addressed. So I just think, I, I think we're fine right now with, with closing it out because we want to get the city paid for it. And then I think, uh, you would go ahead then, uh, I think we're, we can go ahead then and move to the next step, next step. I'm trying to go ahead and, and I'm pleased, I invite you all to come to the first meeting after the 12th. I don't have the calendar in front of me.
It's the 26th.
The 26th, that evening, to take your comment. Hopefully we will have the proposed criteria and, uh, and scoring for people to look at and comment on for the sections that they care about. My guess is people will care a lot more about certain sections than others from what I've seen tonight. Drill down into that and start to see how we address that for each group. I myself personally, um, have my own areas that I'm, I'm particularly focused on. And I'm sure you all, all will too. And then the whole thing, hopefully we can come together and get as close as we can to something that's best for the community.
Stuart, may I say something? It's just 20 seconds.
Sure.
And I, I just want to say that I very much heard, um, the comments about aesthetics and what this would look like. And I will share with you that not only am I an architect, worse than that, I'm an architect from, in art school. And I would not be promoting or anything that I did not believe was going to be attractive. And in fact, if we ended up voting for, uh, fully elevated, but with the condition that it had to look like a Caltrain's freeway bridge, I would suddenly be against it. So I have faith, there are images out there, but we have to edit out. We can have a beautiful bridge, um, unlike what Bridge Blind felt, there are many more images out there. But there can be a beautiful bridge with garbage under it. We don't want to present that. There can be a beautiful bridge that flies across, um, the, the green hills of the Philippines. It doesn't relate, so we can't present that. So we'll try.
So we're going to close out the meeting. I do want to say thank you to all of you. This was very productive and everyone was great, really great. One more, one more item.
One more item on the agenda related to, it's quick, I promise. It's an update on the middle crossing project.
All right. It's informational?
Yes, just informational, no, no direction needed. So, um, I don't know if folks want to leave with that. Okay, I got that. Well, deal. So, um, we wanted to take this opportunity since Ravenswood is coming to a good decision point and we're moving forward with some additional direction. It's starting to bring up some time and so we're getting some momentum on the Middle Avenue Crossing Project, which has been kind of on hold while we try to figure out what are we doing with Ravenswood? Because all these different options have different impacts or potential impacts to what we do at Middle Avenue and, and next to the Stanford, we're at 500, you know. So assuming that we close out the PSR next, uh, on the 26th, um, or the 12th, whenever we can, oh no, you said the 26th.
It'll be the 26th.
Um, so, uh, and moving forward with that, we, uh, open up some staff time. Uh, we also have hired a senior project manager and he's back in the corner there, Maraud. Uh, he is a longtime Menlo Park resident, so he's lived here for, I believe, 26 years or something. And, uh, and he's also, um, previously the public works director at the City of Hayward. So he's got a lot of relevant experience to help us and he's been great, uh, getting up to speed on the middle project, working with the consultant team, getting them, uh, going again, talking with some of the stakeholders. Uh, and so what we believe we can do, and like these are all tentative based on, you know, some of the next steps on Ravenswood. But what we are thinking is that we will come back out to the community, uh, for our second community meeting in the spring of this year, uh, present some of the, uh, renderings that the consultant's done, some options, get some feedback there. Then we'll go to the Complete Streets Commission in spring or summer after the, uh, co- community meeting. And then ultimately to the city council for a preferred alternative. Then we can move, this scope includes environmental studies, so we can go right into environmental, complete those and get started on design. Uh, fall 2019 through, so we come back with the final in 2020.
That's great.
So yes, progress on middle.
Very good.
We're very happy about that.
I will just add, I recently met with the Boy Scouts and this was the only thing they cared about.
Oh, really?
All right.
So watch for your, if, if you got notices about this meeting, you will get notices about these meetings as well. If you're not on those lists, let me know and I'll make sure you're on those lists. That's it.
Thank you, thank you.
I care about beauty and I care about property values. I don't want a train that's elevated in the sky for everyone to see in my backyard. Well, you sound like you're from, are you, okay? So when I look at, when I look at this area, I think even more than high-speed rail, we have a high-speed rail, so we need a metro. People in Menlo Park go to Redwood City and Mountain View goes to Palo Alto. Then somebody from LA goes to San Diego. And even more and more and more. And I think the peninsula's going to grow. You should, you should put the train under there and intersect it with Metro. But this is just stupid and it's political. I know, I love the vibe of the machine. And it is united. So, yeah.